Good evening and welcome to the Livonia City Council. The Honorable Kathleen McIntyre will lead us in the Pledge Allegiance. Will you all rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman McIntyre. We'd like to welcome you to the October 21st, 2019 study session of the Livonia City Council. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,884th regular meeting, which will be a voting meeting, and that meeting will take place on Wednesday, November 6th of this year. We do have one council absence this evening. Councilman Barr will not be with us. He's attending his daughter's choir concert at Stevenson High School. So you'll have six of us. And we would like to introduce any of our groups. Anyone in the audience? No? Okay. Well, we have Kathy Douglas in the front row. She's a good friend from high school, so hi Kathy.
Where are high school?
And Roseanne, and Terry, and there's some true-
More Bentley people, huh?
Yeah, yeah, more Bentley. You know how that goes. So, okay, so anyhow, we have no other announcements, we don't have any public hearings, and Councilman Jolly would like to make one.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to place an item on the regular agenda for the next regular meeting. Ultimately, well, let me introduce her first. I would like to have the council and the administration explore ways to post the study packets that we see here on council in regards to items for public consumption and public information, possibly on the website if that's at all feasible with our current website. Ultimately, I would like to put this into committee to explore and have a conversation. We did see an item in the meeting we just finished in regards to contract prices and bid process, and I think the day and age that we live in in regards to information consumption and availability, it's only right that we allow our residents the opportunity to see the same information that we're seeing. So I would like to place that on the regular agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. So directed to our clerk then, right?
Which committee?
Which committee? Did you want that in legislative or?
I think that should be committee at the whole, to be honest with you, because it affects everything that we do.
Okay. Councilman Jolly would, Vice President Jolly, I should say, would like committee at the whole on that, please. Is there any others? Anyone else? No. Hearing and seeing no one then, we will now go to audience communication. Anyone wishing to speak to the council on any item that's not on the yellow sheet on our study sheet, please approach podium to my left or to my right. We'll be happy to hear your comments. Hearing and seeing no one, we will move on then to our agenda. This is a study meeting. There will be no votes taken this evening. The council members will, however, either offer one resolution and/or a combination of resolutions for each item. The resolutions offered may include an approving, approving, a denying, or a referring resolution to a committee or a city department for their report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered. There are some items that will simply be received and filed for the information of the city council. Please note that all of the items that are appearing tonight before us will move on to Wednesday, November 6th of this year's agenda where they'll be officially voted on. If you want to speak to the council tonight when your agenda item appears, if you'd approach a podium to my left or right and give us your name and address for the record, we'd appreciate it so much. Okay, council, with that, we're going to move into item one, which is a reappointment of Kathleen McIntyre to the Livonia Brownfield Development Authority. This is brought to us from the Office of the Mayor for a three-year term, which will expire November 24th of 2022. Councilmember Meakin.
Thank you, Madam President. There's one thing my colleague is very passionate about, and that is the Brownfield Authority. She's done her homework for many years and works very hard for future developments here in the city of Livonia, and I would be happy to offer an approving resolution for the consent agenda.
Thank you. We have an approving on consent. Were there any others? Any comments? Hearing and seeing none, anyone from the audience on item one? Hearing and seeing no one, thank you, Councilman Meakin. We're on item two, a reappointment of Andrew Lindrum to the Livonia Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. This is brought to us from the Office of the Mayor for a year, three-year term as well that will expire November 24th of 2022. Is there, is Mr. Lindrum here tonight? Somebody? Nope. Okay, I think he's been on before, hasn't he? Yes, Councilwoman McIntyre.
We received a little bit late notice for this, being on the agenda, to be here tonight, so Mr. Lindrum may have had a conflict that prevented him from attending. This is a reappointment, and he's excellent to work with, very knowledgeable about brownfield matters, comes to our meetings very well-prepared, and just a very valued member of the committee, so I'd like to offer his reappointment for the approving for the consent agenda.
Thank you. We do have an approving on consent. Were there any others?
Madam President?
Yes, please, go ahead.
I, I think if we're going to do something, I totally support Mr. Lindrum for the Brownfield Committee. I think, though, if we're going to require people to come to meetings, we have to do it unilaterally across the board. We've made other people come back for regular meetings, and I think it might be appropriate in this case as well. So I'll ask that this be placed on the regular agenda. I think that's only fair, honestly. We've done it with other situations where we-
Yeah, that's fine.
Sure.
Is that good with you?
Yeah, I'm not saying anything in regards to why he is or is not here tonight, but-
No, no, that's fine. Okay, so that goes on the regular, Madam Clerk then? Okay. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak to item two? Hearing and seeing no one, we'll move to item three as a proposed changes to job qualifications, description, and wages for part-time staff at the Livonia Rec Center. Civil Service Department has brought this forward to us, council, to approve job level and classification adjustments effective January 1st of 2020 through December 31st of 2022, as well as wage increases based on the state of Michigan minimum wage increase. Good evening, Director of Civil Service Denise Mayer.
Good morning, good morning. Good evening, Madam President, council members. I come before you with the request that Madam President just read on behalf of Parks and Rec Department. This request has gone through the Parks and Rec Commission, as well as the Civil Service Commission and the PRC. This request is based on, as everyone knows, our unemployment rate, current unemployment rate is 3.5, and we're just trying to be proactive in making sure that we can hire and retain quality employees in all of the part-time positions over at Parks and Rec as we get busier and busier, just making sure that we've got enough skilled staff to provide the services that they've, our residents have become used to. The one caveat here is that if the, with the new Improved Workforce Opportunity Wage Act 337 of 2018, they have set the minimum wage from 2019 through 2030. However, it all hinges on what the unemployment rate is, and if the unemployment rate is less than 8.5%, then the minimum wage will go up, but if the unemployment rate goes above 8.5%, the minimum wage will not, will not be increased. So Parks and Rec has built in that, that same measuring tool, if you will, so that if, if there's no minimum wage increase, Parks and Rec rates will hold where they're at. So I've got Superintendent of Parks and Rec Ted Davis here with me to answer any questions you might have about that.
Thank you. Go right ahead, Mr. Davis.
I would be happy to answer any questions council might have on this. We are seeking change rates for three years here. This is going to be for 2020, '21, and '22, again with the provision as set forth in the Workforce Opportunity Wage Act. Again, we also are asking for some level changes to positions, and this is so we can attract employees and retain our current workforce.
Thank you. So you're thinking ahead. That's great.
Trying.
Anyone from the council wishing to speak or question this item? Anyone from the audience? Do we have direction?
Madam President?
Yes, please.
I'll offer an approving resolution.
We have an approving? No, that mean?
Madam President?
Yes, please, go right ahead.
Councilwoman McIntyre?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman McIntyre.
I was just going to ask if that could be placed on the regular, because my son is a part-time lifeguard supervisor. He's been on lifeguard for, I don't know, five, six years, and just out of abundance of caution and not wanting to vote on something that influences a family member, I will ask not to, I'll ask to be excluded from the vote.
Certainly, thank you.
So I'd like on, on regular, please.
Okay, so we're going to move that over to regular? That's okay with the maker in this? It's okay?
Of course, ma'am.
Okay. All righty, Madam Clerk, you have that then? Okay, perfect. All righty, so that'll be moved to the regular. You heard the reasons why? Yes.
Thank you very much.
Certainly. Thank you for coming in tonight. Is it snowing out there yet?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. All righty. All right, council, we're on to item four, which is a request to approve the holiday parade and tree lighting on Sunday, December 8th of this year. A request to approve a parade route and the closing of certain city streets to request permission from Wayne County to close Farmington Road, from Linden to Five Mile between the hours of 4:00 p.m. and 5:00 p.m., or until the road is returned to normal traffic operation. To authorize Senior Police Officer Michael R. Kellyan to sign the road closure permit on behalf of the city, and that the city of Livonia will assume liability for any damage claims resulting from road closure. This is brought to us from the Department of Recs. I'm going to go to Mr. Director Davis. Director Davis?
Thank you, Council President. That is a lot more information than was actually in the letter I submitted. We are simply asking for road closures for our holiday parade and tree lighting as we have in the last couple of years. One-mile parade route, nothing has changed, still the same time. This is going to be on Sunday, December 8th this year, so hopefully we're going to have great weather out there again, other than the last 15 minutes of the parade last year. I'd be happy to answer any questions council might have on this item.
Go right ahead, Council.
Madam President, I'd like to encourage my fellow, my fellow council members up here to really get in the festive spirit this year and up their attire and costumes and whatnot for the parade. I'm trying my best to acquire a particular costume that I'm going to wear during the parade. I have yet to be able to identify it, but they might fly one in from the North Pole. And it's not a Santa outfit either. It's going to be really special.
This is Santa.
Maybe. I'll offer an approving.
That's, that's great. We have an approving from Council Vice President Jolly with a major surprise coming on December the 8th.
One other comment?
Yes, please.
I think it's only appropriate if we refer to this parade informally as the Holly Jolly Holiday Parade.
I hope so much that one of our daughters would have been, would have been born on Christmas, because I would have done that to them.
Yes, yes, yes. Well, mine's close, and I'm a toy, so that's, anyhow, we won't go there. Thank you, Mr. Davis, and thank you for all the work you do on this.
Thank you.
And I know Scott Barr and, and Vice President Jolly were instrumental in this, and quite frankly, we had this years ago with Jeannie Hildebrand over at Sears Mall, when it was still there, if you recall, at Seven Mile and Middlebelt. So we're just so happy to see this come back and all the wonderful things you guys have done.
And it's a short route. It's a little route, and we like that.
That's right.
I can't imagine a two-and-a-half mile parade route. That would be long.
Yes, sir. All right, well, thank you, council, and we are up to the challenge of outfits and otherwise attire. Okay, is there any comments from the audience? Hearing and seeing none then, we will move to item five, which is a request to approve a four-year contract with Environmental Recycling Group ERG for Household Hazardous Waste and Electronic Waste Program. This is brought to us from the Public Service Division to provide services for household hazardous waste and e-waste services for Livonia residents at their location at 13040 Merriman Road for the years of 2020 through 2023, with an option for the city to terminate the agreement after each year. Mr. Moore?
Good evening, council. Doug Moore with the Public Service Division. We bid this on Mitten on June 6th of 2019. The bids were due on the 25th of June. We had one bidder, which was Environmental Services Group ERG Livonia-based company. They were the provider from 2014 to 2016. U.S. Ecology, the service provider for the last three years, notified us that they were not bidding on future projects. This will be a substantive change to the program. Instead of the two-day drop-off event at Ford Field, we're going to move it to a year-long drop-off event at ERG, which is located at 13040 Merriman Road. ERG has offered to extend their hours on evenings and provide us some potential Saturday dates to allow residential access. Cost for the service in 2020 will be $47 a car based on 100 pounds of material. There are increases built in for the remaining three years, but the cost is still lower than their bid for the four years at Ford Field. We are, the department's asking for a cap of $110,000 a year. We figure that based on the average last three years of the event at Ford Field to the vendor, DPW cost plus our cost to the city of Northville, who we partnered with for the three-year program. After one year, we're going to reevaluate and see. If it doesn't seem like it's working, we're going to come back and go back to the Ford Field event. So we are asking council to award a contract to Environmental Recycling Services to perform the household hazardous waste drop-off event with the ability to terminate the agreement each year. Funding is available in the annual city budget for the service and not to exceed $110,000 a year.
This is good news, good news. Council? Yes, go right ahead, Councilman Meakin.
Thank you, Madam President. Doug, I think this is a wonderful idea. It's going to take a rather large education of our residents to this. Did you put enough into the budget to accommodate that?
Yes. There will be Facebook, website, news releases. We'll hit it hard.
Hit it hard, good, because I know a lot of our residents, you know, store things in the garage for the whole year to that one special day, and now they won't have to do it. So it makes sense. I think it's a wonderful idea, and I'll offer an approving resolution on the consent agenda if there's no objection.
Thank you, Councilman Meakin. Councilwoman McIntyre?
Doug, in the, in, when we've done our traditional one-day events, or now a day-and-a-half events, we offered, we had reciprocity with some communities, correct? Will that still happen, or will this be only Livonia residents now?
It looks like Northville will be, we worked, we teamed with Northville and Northville Township. Northville Township dropped out last year because they lost the funding for it.
Okay.
So we were still in with Northville. When I discussed it with Northville, he was going to have to go back to his council to ask, but seeing as how it's going just as a drop-off event all year, I don't know that it matters anymore in Northville. The pricing is extended to Northville also.
Okay.
So that they have the ability to, to jump onto this, and then the bill would just go to Northville rather than we be the middleman for our event and they're the middleman for their event.
So just, may I ask?
Yeah, sure, go right ahead. Continue.
So, but residents can go as many times as they wanted to, like you could go every month? But we get billed every time a car goes?
We get billed for 100 pounds of material, so if you were to take a cellphone in and drop it off?
Got it.
It goes in a pile until we get to 100 pounds.
Got it, got it. Okay, that's, so, so really the cost is it doesn't matter how many times they go, it's the volume?
Right, it's the volume.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, and I'm sorry if I missed that in your explanation. Thank you, thank you, President.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
I have a question.
No one else? Anyone from the, oh, pardon me, Councilwoman?
Question for Mr. Moore. I know that it's recommended if you take a laptop to turn it into electronic waste disposal site, you're supposed to destroy the hard drive. Are there people there that would do that for you while you wait, or no? You have to do it before you bring it? Okay.
I'd recommend you do it before you take it in.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to comment on this? If not, we're going to go to the audience. Anyone from the audience wishing to comment on item five? Hearing and seeing no one, Madam Clerk, we do have an approving on consent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, great news. Thank you. We are on item six, council, which is a request to authorize purchase of 29 cases of Four Star 180-day briquettes. This is brought to us from the Public Service Commission from Clark Mosquito Control for the 2020 mosquito treatment program from Budget of Funds. Mr. Moore?
This material will be purchased directly from the manufacturer, Clark Mosquito Control. There's no competitive advantage to bid because we are dealing with the manufacturer. This material is different than the past several years. We're trying to rotate the product so that we don't get a resistance built up in the mosquitoes. The briquettes are dropped in catch basins, and they last approximately 180 days, so we try to time it through the season. The material is a biological control that affects the life cycle of the mosquito larvae. The control agent interrupts the larvae's ability to change into the next life cycle. The program occurs in late spring, early summer, and the department is asking council to approve the purchase of Four Star 180-day briquettes from Clark Mosquito Control in the amount of $19,836.
Council, direction, your comments?
Madam President?
Go right ahead.
Mr. Moore, when you say these are deposited into the catch basins, can you give a little bit more detail just what that is?
Sure, at the bottom of the catch basin, it's called a sump, and that's usually where the water sets, and mosquitoes need just still water to lay eggs in, so the material just lays in there. It dissolves over time, and what'll happen is if there's a rain event, that water will get flushed out, so the briquette is still there to still provide control measures to the mosquitoes when they come back to lay eggs in that still water again after the rain event ends.
Thank you. Are these catch basins on public or private property?
Public. They're the street catch basins in the streets.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes.
Anyone else? We, we've certainly had a lot of problems when it comes to mosquitoes, so anything we can do to eliminate those little pests will, I'm sure, be more than welcome by everyone, if you will. We notice a big difference, or is there, is it measurable at all? I mean, that may be difficult, perhaps.
I would hope, I think a lot depends on the weather, because they, they need standing water.
Okay.
And it's not a long period of time, but they need standing water. Like this past spring, I think it was a good year for mosquitoes.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Just, if I can make another follow-up question? I think it's a great program, but do we do anything in the parks or on the golf courses in regards to this as well? Because in thinking about the standing water, that seems like that would be logical places where we do have standing water.
We have a program in recreational parks that have playgrounds, soccer fields, ball diamonds. If there's standing water, we use a product called Vectalex. I don't know about the golf courses. I can't speak to that for Ted. We don't do nature preserves, we don't do wooded areas. It's only areas where we'd have public, you know, if we had a vacant, a vacant piece of city land, we don't do that. It's just recreational parks.
Okay, thank you. I'll offer an approving resolution. I think it's important, particularly in light of the equine encephalitis outbreak that we've had here.
Equine eastern encephalitis.
Yeah, triply.
Yeah, triply.
Yes.
So this obviously highlights the need to do such things and to protect the public, so thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have that on consent. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
If there's no comments from the audience, then we'll go to item seven, which is a request for authorization to purchase one Hollister Model S440 FTS lift, forklift, excuse me, from Public Service Division to supply the Public Service Division. This is from Budget of Funds, Mr. Moore.
Yes, it was advertised on Mitten on September 18th. The bid closed on the 28th of September. One company, Alta Equipment, out of Livonia supplied a quote for the proper piece of equipment. This will, the unit will be used by the water section, but is available for all DPW sections to be used. It's used to unload materials, meters, hydrants, lids, pipe, bulk supplies, anything that comes in palletized in the back of a semi-truck. Unit is replacing a light unit that was purchased over 25 years ago. That unit is in poor shape with repairs exceeding its value. This purchase will not increase the fleet. That old one will be disposed of through the auctioning process.
Counsel, your direction or pleasure?
Madam Chair, I'll offer the approving resolution on consent if there's no objection.
Okay, we have an approving on consent. Were there any others? Anyone from the audience wishing to comment on this item? Hearing and seeing no one, item seven then, thank you, it's on consent.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. This is a request number eight, a request to authorize an additional appropriation and expenditure. This is brought to us from the Public Service Division as well. I'll let you go through that, Mr. Moore.
On April 8th, 2018, council approved a three-year extension for a not-to-exceed amount of $130,000 a year with Mass Electric. The department is asking council to amend the annual expenditure for 2019 only to RCI Electric, which is, was formerly Mass Electric, to $275,000. Funds are available in the 2019 annual budget. Reasons for the increase, our city electrician became gravely ill in the spring and passed away early in the year. The building maintenance foreman suffered a heart attack in the spring and was out for a couple of months, and our building maintenance supervisor retired in August. And we also saw an uptick in electrical issues, which added to the increased work. We figured out a monthly amount with the contractor, and this funding would cover the last two months of this year.
Wow. I mean, we don't need a facilities director. Yes, go right ahead, Councilman.
Mr. Moore, could you expand on, just to give us some specifics of what kind of services that this company is performing, and maybe what buildings tend to be problem areas for us?
I think the problem areas are general across the board. It's anywhere from changing ballast in the fluorescent lights, to working in parking lot lights, to repairing underground electrical issues on the city sign lights, the monument lights. They go from Wilson Barn to Greenmead to here, to the Rec Center, basically any city building where our electrician would have been doing it before. It's ultimately, we're depending on the contractor right now.
And, and prior to this current configuration, we had an in-house electrician?
Yes.
As well as Mr. Mackey in the position?
Yes, and we are struggling to fill that position because master electricians are well-paid and don't necessarily want to come to work for the city anymore. Where the benefit package was probably something really sterling 20, 30 years ago, they're better paid elsewhere in private industry, and plus-
And at the moment, there's such a shortage of qualified electricians.
Yes, and an aging master electrician with a limited resource pool.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Just let me go through the council real quick. Anyone else before we turn over to the audience? Yes, sir, your name and address for the record?
My name is Frank Struble with RCI Electric. I was in the audience here, and I figured I could answer some questions if you, if you had them. Our business address, 32733 Folsom Road, Farmington Hills. We were MAS Electrical Services. We actually merged with RCI Electric, which is, it's still a family company, older brother, younger brother merged our company, so we took the RCI name. But, yes, there, the city's electrician did ballast and lamp replacements, small-scale type repairs and such. The volume of work, we would step in as needed, as requested by DPW to, to help. We basically work in every building in the city, from the courthouse to the libraries to Greenmead, to wherever we're needed. There have been a number of situations where there have been some HVAC replacements at various locations where the condensing units had to be replaced, furnaces upgraded, that type of thing, where we were involved, as well as work at the police stations, fire stations, that type of thing. So I didn't really realize the volume of work was so much higher this year, but anyway, if there are any questions on what we're doing and how we're doing it, then I'm certainly willing to answer that.
Councilman Meakin, then Council Vice President Jolly.
Okay, back to Doug here, because I'm looking, it says, we originally approved 130,000 now, and then it said we spent in the fiscal year 193,000, and our current fiscal year ends November 30th, so we still need an extra, you know, 175 and- So, we still need an extra, you know, hundred and, uh, or what, 75 and 10? So, 85,000 for the next month?
When we did the letter, we did not have all of August and September invoices turned in either. So, we were trying to balance that in also so that we didn't have to come back again.
So, is 275,000 enough?
Yes.
And then, I don't recall any exceptional number in the 20- 20 budget. So, are we covered for next year? To the best of your knowledge?
Yes, to the best of my knowledge at this moment in time.
Wow, that's something we're gonna have to keep a close eye on.
It is. We have our foreman back, so that helps, number one.
I- I'm gonna offer an approving resolution on this and trusting in your good judgment that, uh, this is necessary and the best, uh, resolution for the city at this time.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else? Yes, go right ahead.
I'd just like to ask if we put that on the regular and where I am very comfortable with the recommendation and, um, how, um, Mr. Moore is addressing this problem and getting us the resources we need and the vendor he's picked, I'd just like it to go on, on the regular. So, um, I- we have maybe some opportunity if we have additional questions between then and now.
Okay.
But I'm comfortable with it, but would be comfortable putting it on the regular.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, sir, for, um, approaching us and giving your comment. We appreciate it. Um, counsel, we are on, uh, item nine, which is a request to authorize an additional appropriation expenditure, again, to the Public Service Division for replacement of the City Hall Fire Panel Alarm System in the total amount of four thousand 793 dollars and 24 cents, based on unforeseen issues that required to be addressed following inspection by our fire department from budget of funds.
Did you miss one?
Are we on eight?
We're on nine.
Oh, nine, yeah, okay.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Moore, go right ahead. It's nine.
Madam President, it was my understanding that this item was supposed to be polled. Um, the department, eh, has a different number than the finance department has. So, we need to get the total amount.
Clear that out?
Yeah.
Do you want me to?
If we could, please.
Counsel, is that all right with you that we're gonna hold that, item nine, for this evening? Anyone? Till we get that number straightened out?
When do we want to pull two?
When would you like it heard?
It would be the next, I think, the next study.
November 6th?
Yeah, yes, please.
Okay, certainly. Madam Chair, if there's no objection, yes, go right ahead.
One quick question. I mean, anytime we pull something off an agenda, I'm always concerned that there's timing issues related to it. And with the DWRF project being tied to state funding, is there- are there any impacts as far as our application or award or anything?
I don't think with this.
Or release of funds?
Not- not with this. That's the next item. Yeah, that's number 10. This was there.
I'm sorry, what? Oh, all righty. What are we talking? Okay, we're on nine, we're on item nine.
Can you describe item nine?
There was an old, there was an old agenda, item nine, which had the request for the, um, City Hall Panel Alarm. The new agenda came out. Unfortunately, I didn't have it. I think, uh, Mark has the new item, number nine, which is a dwarf. So, we are, I know, item nine is dwarf. The previous item that was removed.
Thank you.
Item nine, okay.
No, item nine is the-
Yeah, by the way, you said that, I was wondering.
Well, wait a minute, because the item, the agenda I have right here, item nine, is the drinking water, yes.
All right.
And so, yeah.
Well, they had taken it off, that's why.
It had been polled.
But the agenda I'm reading from has it on, on item nine. So, we've been asked to remove it to November 6th. And if there's no strong objection, then we'll do that. Okay? So, now we're-
So, to be clear, we're removing the DWRF item?
No, the fire panel.
Fire panel.
Madam President.
This is clear as much.
Just for clarification here, I think, I believe the agendas that have been provided to the public in attendance and the balance of council here, you have item nine listed as the OHM slash DWRF funding?
That's the next one.
No, on everyone else's agenda, that is number nine.
Okay.
So, I think the item that you're referring to on yours, your agenda might be outdated in regards to what has been provided to everybody else. So, I don't think you have to think any items on that.
Mine too.
So, we should just proceed with this. I'll provide you my agenda if you'd like to take a look.
Oh, thank you very much. Thank you for a good agenda. All right, so now we are on, uh, item nine, which is, uh, request-
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, this is, who's coming from the Public Service Division? Everybody's leaving us. Okay, item nine, sorry, everybody. Todd, you're gonna be on this?
I'm pitching in on this one, yes.
Okay, just a second. Let me just announce it. It's a request to amend a contract with OHM Advisors and to request additional appropriation expenditures. Um, go right ahead, Mr. Zalinsik.
Madam President, just to make it, uh, even more clear, just want to make sure this actually is a request for professional services for OHM Advisors under a QPS contract. Not for additional expenditures, not for appropriation. It's just to have them to provide additional, uh, professional services for us. So, I just want to clarify that off the bat. As you know, the city of Livonia has done dwarf projects in the past. We've got, uh, funding from the state of Michigan to do a loan, low-interest loans to help out, uh, areas that have been deteriorated, uh, throughout the city. And OHM Advisors has been, um, very helpful in that, uh, aspect. And we're looking to partner up with them again this, this time for fiscal year 2020. As you know, we put in a, uh, project proposal, had a public hearing early in the year and asking for city council's approval to have OHM Advisors. Jessica Katers here for any particular, uh, questions. But fiscal year 2020, to provide design services by the January deadline to help get us in the queue of the, uh, project proposals. And then our goal is in the fall of 2020 to help replace, uh, three locations. Those three locations, just for your reference, are over at Six Mile and Middle Bell. Then it's, there's two locations in Section 35, of which we have, uh, approximately 14 streets in Devonshire Park subdivision and approximately 11 streets at Bonaparte Gardens in Section 35, the northwest and southeast. So, with that, I'd be happy to turn over to Jessica for any supplemental information, but then looking for your approval, any amount of 547,000 dollars for the design services, based on a $10 million dwarf project, of which 505 is for design, or for engineering. 20,000 is for administrative services and 22,000 for soul-boring investigation to help us out for the design plans. Thank you.
Can I ask you a quick question on, on these? When we, when we start tearing up roads and different things, have we ever thought about putting, you know, only five more days to go or 10 more days to go? You know, um, because I know it's hard sometimes to determine completion dates, but like when you drive down Five Mile, you know, and we've got all the little cones out there and we're doing great work, I don't mean it that way. But it's kinda nice to think, oh, gosh, we only have to do this for so many more days.
We can, we have a message board. Maybe look at working, partnering with DPW to say, restoration to complete the next seven days. We are working our way towards Middle Bell, but, you know, getting maybe more, you know, the, you know, the construction's at its end and maybe give them like eight, seven days. But we can't predict the weather, but we try to do our best by maybe getting more, uh, information out there as far as a message board to the residents to, relief is finally coming.
Oh, that's great. Great idea. Okay, thanks. Okay, um, counsel, do you have any questions more for Mr. Zalinsik before we go? No? Go right ahead.
Sure.
Sounds good. We are, um, looking excited to partner with the city on this.
Jessica, just, can you state your name and address for the record?
Jessica Katers, OHM Advisors, 34,000 Plymouth Road. Um, as Todd had mentioned, this is, uh, the next phase in a project that we have been working on with the city. We updated the city's water main master plan in early 2019, submitted a project plan for the dwarf, um, funding in April of 2019. And then over the summer, the state had indicated to the city that they, they had scored high and, high enough to receive the, uh, low-interest loan funding for, um, the drinking water replacement. And as Todd said, there are three different locations in the city that we are, um, targeting with this first phase. It's a total of seven and a half miles of water main that would be upgraded and replaced. And, um, we are targeting third quarter of 2020 for construction.
All righty, go right ahead, Councilman Meakin.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, this is a long-term project that, uh, the city has partnered with OHM for many years. They've helped us in acquiring the grants and grant approval and, uh, bid submission for it. And we greatly appreciate working with OHM on this or we probably wouldn't be receiving these funds right now. So, um, I'm happy to offer an approving resolution on this for the consent agenda. This is, um, an absolute necessity that the city has made a priority for many years and for many years to come in taking care of our infrastructure. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Anybody else before we leave this and go to the audience? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this item? Hearing and seen, no one. Uh, thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Okay, you too. Drive safe. Okay, uh, let's see, so.
So, now we're at 10.
Okay, counsel, we're request, uh, item 10, uh, request to accept storm water facilities maintenance agreement from our engineering division. Uh, from Hagerty Square LLC in conjunction with the construction of storm drainage system that provides, um, adequate drainage for properly developed at 19750 Hagerty Road in the northwest quarter of Section 6. Mr. Zalinsik.
Good evening, Madam President and city council members. Again, this is the housekeeping issue for Phase 2 of Hagerty Square LLC. Looking for your approval to sign and execute the stormwater agreement with our, our folks there as part of the approval process to the engineering department. Thank you. Happy to hear any questions.
Counsel, your pleasure, your direction, comments?
Madam President.
Yep.
Uh, this is a housekeeping matter. I will offer an approving.
Thank you. Councilman Jolly has offered an approving. Councilman Meakin.
Just a question to the engineering department. Todd, isn't this usually done at the completion of the project?
Uh, yes, but this is under with us. It's not with Wayne County. So, it's, uh, Wayne County usually wait to the end with Wayne County itself. But since they're under construction, whatever, we want to make sure that we get it signed as part of the approval process early on because we've had problems where we can't get the owners to sign the document at the very end, taking a long time to get the certificate of accuracy. So, we're trying to make sure that we do things upfront and, uh, work with them to facilitate this stormwater agreement to make sure it's maintained.
Okay, I thought it was a little different than our normal procedure on this, so thank you.
Good, good eye.
Yeah, good eyes. All right.
That'll be for consent, Madam President.
Thank you. Consent, please. All right, uh, anybody from the audience wishing to speak to item 10? If not, I'll move to 11, which is a request for a one-year extension of a waiver use approval. This is brought to us from the Planning Commission, petition 2018040210, submitted by Feldman Automotive, Inc., which previously received approval by the city council October 1st of 18 to construct an operated used car or used auto dealership with outdoor display of vehicles known as Feldman Pre-Owned Superstore on property located on the north side of Plymouth Road between Farmington and Stark in the southeast quarter of Section 28. Mr. Taramina.
Thank you, Madam President. Feldman Automotive is seeking a one-year, uh, extension of the site plan and waiver use that was approved by council last October. Uh, this is on the north side of Plymouth Road between Farmington and Stark Roads. This is the final site plan. It shows a one-story, 6,850 square foot building that would house the dealership showroom and sales offices. Uh, the front part of the site, as well as a portion of the rear parking lot, uh, was to be used mostly in conjunction with the, uh, display and storage of, uh, pre-owned vehicles. And then the remainder of the rear of the property, uh, would be used for, as an inventory lot for, uh, the dealership's new vehicles, as well as a stormwater detention basin and maintenance of an existing cellular tower. Uh, altogether, the site plan showed a total of, uh, 817 vehicles that could be stored on the site. Uh, the petitioner has submitted a letter which explains the challenges that they've encountered with respect to progressing with the construction phase. Uh, this is due mostly with, uh, unexpected high costs. They are therefore requesting the one-year extension of the site plan. Uh, in the meantime, the petitioner would like to use the property to store vehicles. They've, uh, supplied a vehicle inventory lot plan, which was reviewed by, uh, the Planning Commission. Uh, this plan shows approximately one-third of the site, or about 3.46 acres, being used for car storage for up to 480, uh, vehicles. Uh, the vehicle storage lot would be enclosed with fencing. At the closest point, uh, the vehicle stored on the lot would be about 280 feet from Plymouth Road. Uh, the area between the road and the fence that would enclose the vehicles, this area would be cleaned up, kept free of vehicles, all of the, uh, deteriorated pavement, as well as the gravel would be, uh, removed and grass would be planted. There's a number of old lights from the previous dealership that operated at this location. Uh, those lights would all be removed. The only improvements, uh, that would be on the front part of the site would be the driveways that provide access to Plymouth Road or from Plymouth Road to the vehicle inventory lot, as well as, uh, the adjacent Hertz rental operation to the west, which actually relies on this site for access to that property. So, with that, I will answer any questions you may have.
Certainly. Uh, Vice President Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Taramina, for explaining the situation. You know, my question is not so much directed towards you, but towards the petitioner right off the bat. I was one of the council members who supported this initially. And my gut tells me at this point that I'm inclined to not support it going forward. By all accounts, you represent a thriving business here in Livonia and throughout metro Detroit. I can't understand why you were not able to get this done. This was controversial in terms of many different people wanting something else to be used for such a large piece of property. Ultimately, what you're proposing here is an extension to allow you to continue parking cars there. And that's not what we wanted from the very beginning. You were go- your, your client was gonna be making investment in the community. And that's why some of us were swayed, the majority were swayed, to allow you to do so. You know, Mr. Taramina's done a great job providing the explanation as it's been presented, presented so far. But, you know, not to put you on the spot, but I need you to do better. Because that's, that's not gonna fly, at least with me. Please.
Certainly. Sir, your name and, uh, address for the record?
Trey Bryce with Jaffe Ray Hewer &amp; Weiss, 2777 Franklin Road, Southfield, Michigan. Um, we share the frustration. And, um, the biggest point, as, as Mark mentioned, it's echoing here, um, was, I mean, actually, some of the same issue with the, the master electrician we talked about was the availability of construction workers. I mean, we went out to bid and they came in 30 to 40% higher than expected bids. Even after value engineering, the price for the, the proposal that we had, the, the one building was, you know, three and a half to four and a half million dollars for the, for the building and for all the, the related improvements, which was just much higher than anyone had expected. And, um, as well, we still have the intent for improving the property, improving the neighborhood. We'd like being in the city. It's the goal to continue that. And, um, and again, I'm gonna say it again, I echo, I, we echo that frustration. And so, part of when those really high bids came back, it gave a moment for pause to try to figure out how, how do we move forward? Because the goal is still to move forward and have, um, the property returned to a beneficial use. There's several, and we've been looking into several things, which brought us to talk to the, to this, to, to the city. We've got, um, still possible of redesigning, maybe coming back with a new site plan and go essentially going through the process again to have the building changed in a manner that economically works a little better and makes more sense for the property. Um, we've looked at, um, potentially changing the use. Um, having a, actually having the building in front, again, it would require, almost everything's gonna require a new site plan, so we'll, uh, recognize that. Um, to have a retail commercial use building in the front. Had looked at, um, climate-controlled, uh, storage is one of them. And a third option that we've looked at is actually acquiring that Hertz deal, the Hertz operation just west of the property. Remodeling that, making that into the, uh, used car and then still having different commercial use, some other use in the front of the, on the front of the subject property. Um, so, looking at all these things and trying to figure them out is, you know, costs some time, taking time to get, and this brought us to where, um, we are at this point. And so, as part of still trying to represent both Feldman and, in the best manner and to have, you know, something that works for the city is to, um, move forward with the, the vehicle inventory plan that we had. It's gonna fix up the front, clear, plant more grass. It will look nicer. Um, the parking area would be fenced in, um, screens, you couldn't see the vehicles. And then the back portion at this part would just remain as it is wooded, um, and with the cell tower in the back. I'm more than happy to answer any of your other questions.
Councilman Jolly, continue.
So... So, your main reason is the cost of the plan that you had been approved to accomplish. Costs aren't going to go down anytime soon, not for the foreseeable future. I mean, so what you're saying is, if I'm hearing correctly, if I'm analyzing what you're saying correctly, you need to start over?
They did, they, that's...
No, I know, but I don't know why we're doing this, extending this piece of property to have the approved site plan extended into the future and allow you to have an interim usage in the meantime. I want to see a plan that you start over. Show us what your ultimate plan is because this doesn't cut it.
And I, I understand.
Cutting the grass and it just, that's nonsense.
In the interim, I mean, to offer the, it actually is still an improvement on what the piece of property is right now.
Not enough. Not enough for my support.
So, would you sit fallow and with everything torn up as it has?
Okay. Were you all set?
I'm all set, Madam President.
Okay. Councilman Meakin and then Councilman Kritzman.
Well, it's kind of ironic that you're coming back to us, saying that you're going to put in screening and more shrubs and greenery, and those are the same things that we asked you to do originally, and you ignored us. You guys just, we asked you to do a few things, and you said, nah, we don't need to. We're the number one Chevy dealer in the state of Michigan. I'm not as generous as my colleague. I'm going to offer denying resolution, and we can start over with this project because this is not acceptable.
Thank you, Councilman Kritzman.
I hadn't had the opportunity...
Sir, just a minute. Councilman Kritzman has a floor.
I hadn't had the opportunity to speak to anybody else on council prior to hearing what they had to say this evening, but I'm happy to hear that some of my same sentiments that I was harboring have been echoed in their comments. These, this was a long process on your guys' end as well. We were presented with multiple different versions of the building. I don't think it surprises anybody that building costs money to construct. From our perspective, we did not want something that was just inundated with vehicles, and that's frankly all we've received so far. I've placed several calls to the city, and Mark knows because he's fielded them, inquiring about what is the process and how are they able to use it, making no improvements to the site. Now, maybe you guys did something out there to level off an area, maybe, but there hasn't been anything substantive that has been done. So, I was happy to see that there was a temporary improvement plan in place and was considering offering a bit of support, recognizing that you do have difficulties in that there's hundreds of vehicles sitting there, and there's a long-term plan that's being worked on. Sounds like you really don't have any certainty over what that long-term plan is. Is that what I'm gathering? There's too many options on the table for you at this point to be committed to any particular direction. And I can understand that those things take time, but as I go back and study this temporary measure, I agree with some of the other comments. I don't think it goes far enough even on a temporary basis. That's all, Madam Chair.
Go right ahead, sir.
Dave Kotarski, Feldman Automotive. I just said, Mr. Meakin, the request to have things done, who was that given to or?
That was in the site plan approval process. We asked for more shrubberies, more bushes put up front so you could hide the vehicles.
With the site plan that was approved. Okay, okay, perfect. No, no, yeah. So, as Trey said, I mean, we've been in continuous conversations with Mr. Teramino. As soon as, you know, we put it out for bid, got, you know, the bid packages back, and we're quite surprised with the cost of the project. We have had probably three separate meetings with some different ideas. We're in negotiations or talks right now, trying to figure out what the Olson, Ms. Olson wants to do with that parcel of where the Hertz location is. Certainly, if we can come to terms on that, that could, you know, change a lot of, you know, our plan on there. There's a usable building there. We would need to clean it up, do some things. Obviously, we know we would have to come back through, you know, the process on that, but we're certainly open. That's how we, obviously, as our one-year came up, that's why we're here in front of you, saying we understand that we haven't gotten done what we originally wanted to. Believe me, as Trey said, this isn't what we signed up for. We didn't want to go through the two-year process of getting these approvals and then sitting here and negotiating with all these different projects and coming up with different uses. We want to get it cleaned up. We certainly still need the back portion of what was originally approved for the overflow storage for the Chevy lot, and then we need to figure out what's going to work, you know, for us as well as ultimately the city on the front portion. Right now, this proposal would give us our needs, and then ideally, we could get to work on this ASAP, getting the front cleaned up, you know, to what you have suggested. So, to your request, I hear you loud and clear, and that's what we're wanting to do. I think you can understand where we're coming from. As we've been working through these different scenarios, it'd be kind of crazy to spend $100,000 in landscaping and all tear down until we knew what we were going to do. So, we weren't trying to drag our feet or slow the process down for any reason than that. This has occupied, believe me, far more time and energy than we ever thought it would be. And I think a few of you, you probably see a lot of people in our boat. The, we're, the cost, I agree, Mr. Jolly, the cost isn't going down, but it is crazy high right now. Hopefully, we see a little bit of relief. I don't know. We've seen a couple of projects come back, but some of the trades are just through the roof, through the roof.
Madam President.
You all set?
Yes.
Okay, go right ahead.
Madam President. Council, I'm sure you're familiar with the terminology of having the wool pulled over your eyes and where that comes from. Trick in the judge, fool in them. That's what I feel like. Why would we extend a one-year time period on this project when you're telling us you're not going to do this project?
Well, that isn't, that isn't what has been said, and I'm, and I'm...
Isn't that, you're looking at buying another, excuse me, you're looking at buying another building. You don't know what the plan is. You don't know how you're going to proceed. You don't know when you're going to proceed. If we're going to offer an extension, there's nothing determinate in what you've provided, nothing, nothing at all, other than the fact that you're going to keep putting cars there. And that's exactly what we did not want.
With all due respect, that, as there, even the options, the first option is still working on the building that was approved and trying to figure out how to make it work. And that was the first, is the list that I gave. And I'm sorry if you feel that there was, as you said, the wool pulled over your eyes. It was never the intent. We would have not made the concessions and done some of the extra landscaping and thing that as we worked through the process, we just would have said, this is what we want, and seen what happened, and that would have been the goal.
Yeah, I'd like to say, to that point, we have cars sitting in mud and dirt right now. That's not what we signed up for. I mean, we have been, Mr. Teramino knows, we've been in constant communication with this. We're trying to figure out what direction we want to go. We ultimately have to figure out which direction we're going to go. There's a couple of pieces that still we're working on. You know, if I can get the Olson site next door, that could really change, you know...
This is what I'm saying, sir. And listen, by all accounts, you are a thriving commercial enterprise.
For sure, yeah.
Figure it out. We signed up for your plan.
And that's why we're asking for an extension?
You're the one who has the ability. Well, you haven't done anything yet, and you don't have any determinate plans to do anything. You just said it again. If you can get the Hertz location next door, this, if this, it's just, it's all fictitious at this point.
Well, so, I guess you just want it to sit empty? Is that, I mean, just, is that...
Sir.
No, that's my question. I'm just...
Okay.
Sure.
Councilman, go right ahead.
You guys have to understand that from our perspective, it sitting empty is actually more attractive to the development community than it being filled with cars. And it was our expectation that the project would get built and then cars would be stored there, not the other direction. So, the day that I saw the first cars being put out there made me question, and I questioned out loud that day whether or not that project would ever get built. And I don't think I was alone in that regard. So, I think that's where some of the angst is coming from, from our side, is that we had the expectation that until that agreed-upon site plan was executed, then you'd be able to use the property in the manner in which you intended to use it. So, this looks, from our perspective, as though you subverted the intent of our approval and that you are simply doing what works best for you.
Certainly.
I'm trying to just calmly and rationally lay it out for you.
Working with you guys, working through site plans, I mean, you can see, I can bring in the bid packages. Mark's seen a lot of the people. I mean, this isn't an exercise of...
I look at them all day long. I look at it professionally all day long, and if, I don't know where you got your original numbers from. I know the firm's involved. I don't, I mean, there have not been that, I would question your original numbers. If that was your operating premise, that you were going to build something for this and it came in 30 to 40 percent higher, I don't think the problem is necessarily in where the bids came in solely. I think some of it was your starting point.
We did change a lot through this process, though, too. I mean, we did add a, you know, good amount.
Certainly.
Right. Which, to your point, I mean, we should have probably done a better job forecasting that as well. The last thing you guys want is us to build a building that's then not a going concern two, three years from now. I mean, that's the last thing we would want to do.
Say it again?
The last thing you want is to do is build a building that's not a going concern two or three years if it's not a viable business model. Right? That's the, I mean, believe me, if we felt it was a great business model, we could build it where a cost basis made sense, we'd be halfway built right now.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman McIntyre.
I'm inclined to support my colleague, Mr. Meakin, in the denying resolution. What this feels to me is like a stall tactic to keep storing cars there. And, you know, you are a very successful business enterprise. The things that we've asked for, the meetings we've had, I've just, I've felt that what Feldman has wanted was just the city to agree to do things the way you wanted them done. And we certainly appreciate great businesses. We're happy to have a lot of great businesses here, but we're used to more of a feeling of partnership and, you know, businesses listening to our concerns, which aren't based on the whims or capricious demands of city council, but rather to get the highest and best use on something that significantly contributes to a lot of work that's been done on Plymouth Road. So, thank you.
Councilman Kritzman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One last item. I will offer the approving resolution. Obviously, this is going to be on the regular agenda. So, you do have a denying and an approving resolution out there, but I think it's fairly evident where the direction of council is headed at this point.
Thank you. Is there any other petitioners, anything else?
I guess a question. How involved should you be with conversations when we're bringing them to Mark? I mean, is that something we should be on the schedule, the coming to planning meetings as far as we're working through plans with that site?
Vice President Jolly.
With all due respect, we represent the residents of the city.
Sure.
We make the decisions.
Sure.
Mr. Teramino guides the process, and he's a professional, and he's going to do whatever he can to try and alleviate your concerns and ours. We're the ones who decide.
Our understanding was he was the point person to bring it to you.
Well, he has, he communicates with us as well, but any decisions will be made in this chamber, as they have been previously.
I don't think that, I think the question more was, in the process, while we've been trying, working through this and had the meetings with the city, saying, it's like, should we, he was asking, would it have been beneficial, would you have asked if we would have gone, shown back up at a meeting, saying, we're working through this, meeting with the planning commission, saying, we're, you know, we're having these difficulties. That's what he meant. So, it wasn't as much of a, you know, surprise, pull the wool over your eyes, the comment that you're unfortunate feeling. That wasn't what he meant.
That's better said. That's because...
That's, Mr. Teramino's more than capable, and he's a professional, and he can handle that. In terms of, the wool over the eyes comment, that's particularly, we were never expecting cars to be there until the project was done. So, the fact that cars started showing up, that's exactly what we didn't want to have happen. As soon as you did that, we all felt like we were tricked, we were fooled, and it happened right off the bat, right off. There was almost no delay in that happening, and that's exactly what was not supposed to happen. That's not how this happens in other developments. That's not how the city operates. That's not how we do business in Livonia, period.
First, that wasn't an intent and nor was that...
It is what happened, council.
No, I'm not saying it's not...
Council, we'll just leave it at that. It's what happened. Thank you, sir.
Councilman Kritzman.
I was something going to say. It's up to your discretion how much information to share with council along the way. We all have email addresses that you have access to. You're welcome to share information as you see fit. To me, that's a, it's a practice on your part to help usher your project through the process. And if it's in your best interest to offer additional information, great. I don't think that necessarily obligates council to sit back and review something and owe you a response, but if you desire to offer up additional input and updates along the way, I think that would likely be welcomed.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Yes, go right ahead.
And I'd just like to, with regards to your point about coming to meetings, Mr. Teramino does an outstanding job of keeping council informed of things, and he makes himself so available to council all of the time with questions. So, there's no barrier between what gets shared with Mr. Teramino and council's ability to make decisions. So, thank you.
I appreciate that. I mean, it does sound like that a little bit, though, because, I mean, we've had multiple meetings, as he's aware of, with multiple developers, but believe me, that are business friends of ours, that we're not pulling the wool over anyone's eyes. I mean, to answer that comment that you feel like we haven't been working on that, that's where I feel like, and again, I want to make sure you have the information. That's why I asked the question. So, I just, if the emails to you, just keeping you informed where we're going, that's, that's perfect. We can do that in conjunction with Mark's communication to you.
I, I'm not the one that made the comment about, you know, my colleague's comment. I'm just saying...
I was speaking to the whole.
But I just want to be very clear. Mr. Teramino is never an impediment to information that this council needs or information that should be shared, and he, like the other department heads, is exceptionally available to council and answers our questions, meets with us, so...
I appreciate that, and I would speak more, I think, to Mr. Jolly, not you.
Understand.
It's all right. Madam President. Yes, please, go right ahead.
This brings me back to a point that we had a meeting with them regarding the storage facility. So, the purpose of the original approved resolution has been kind of by the wayside. So, you were already looking at other opportunities for that project, but yet you're still parking cars in a dirt lot, which was, like my colleague mentioned, was kind of what we were opposed to from the get-go. So, there's a lot more going on here than just that you, the cost of the building was too expensive, because everyone faces increasing in cost right now. I mean, it's brutal. It's not easy, and we understand that.
Well, and some of that, and while it needs to be looked at in kind of both hands, there is still looking at trying to make the plan work, but knowing that these prices came in high and thinking, well, perhaps they won't, then it's prudent to look at what are the next opportunities. Actually, frankly, some of it comes back to the feedback that we got from the planning commission and city council of, there were voices that wanted something different on the front of the property. And that's like, well, perhaps if that's something that would work, then we could find a win that works for everybody. And that's really what led us there.
But then I think we're back to square one, then. If that's the reality of where we're at, then let's look at what's the best use for the property, for both you guys and us. And that might not include having an extension on this property. So...
So, what we have is a denying and an approving for November 6, and I also think there's a bit of a perception problem when the cars were parked out there. So, whether there were emails, Mr. Teramino, who has been said does an excellent job of keeping us informed, it is what it is. And if you have any other questions, though, please. We all have phone numbers. We all have emails, so please contact. Feel free to do that.
Absolutely. We will in the future, for sure.
Certainly. Okay. Anyone from the audience wishing to speak to item 11 before we leave it? Hearing and seeing no one, then we will move on to item 12, and that is where we're at. Okay. This is a waiver petition from the Planning Commission, petition 2019090814, submitted by Livonia Medical Ventures LLC to construct a canopy addition and renovate exterior facet of the building located on the east side of Middle Belt Road between West Chicago and Plymouth Road in the northwest quarter of section 36. Mr. Teramino.
Thank you. Again, this is a request to renovate an existing office building. I'm showing you this plan just to, so you get a better understanding of where this property is located. It's at the corner... is located, it's at the corner of Middle Belt and Orange Lawn Avenues, directly adjacent to Emerson Middle School, and I'm going to shoot right to the existing photograph of the building, this is what it currently looks like. It is a brick building with T-111 siding on the upper part of the facade, it's an L-shaped building, as you can see, it was built in the late 1970s, actually, it's a multi-tenant retail building, including a branch bank, it's now used mostly for medical uses, the building altogether is about ninety-seven hundred square feet. This is the site plan, showing the, the footprint of the building in relationship to the, the parking lot around it. This is what they plan to do with the building, it's basically construct a canopy addition within the inside corner of the building, that canopy would extend about twenty feet out from the existing building, it would raise the roof height on that portion of the building by approximately five feet, there's some old planer boxes in front that would be re, well, removed and then rebuilt in a different form, different style, with benches added, all new concrete placed along the, within the, the plaza directly adjacent to the main entry into the building. All the wood siding would be removed, you can see the, the blue on the top of the building is a, is a new cornice treatment that would be added to the building, that's ephesus on the upper part, and then the brick would remain but would be painted. All of these details were looked at by the planning commission, who is recommending approval of the project as proposed, with some additional stipulations relative to the repair of the existing parking lot and enclosure of the, of the dumpster that's in the northeast, or, excuse me, southeast corner of the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, questions, comments, direction?
We haven't talked about good dumpster enclosures in a while.
I'm not touching this.
Or dumpster diving. Uh, yes, anybody else wishing to speak to this? Oh, Councilwoman McIntyre.
I, I'm trying to, to, I didn't pick up on this when I reviewed it before the meeting, but did the, did the planning commission address the requirements or the recommendations that, that our director of inspection, Jerome Hannah, wanted to make sure were included? I'm trying to make sure that those were picked up, yes, they, they were incorporated into the, it looks like they were incorporated into the planning commission's requirements.
They usually are.
Yeah, that's what I thought, but I just, I went, I see a mark, I found him.
You found it, okay, thank you.
I mean, I, I'll be anxious, of course, as I'm sure we all will be to hear what Mr. Kritzman thinks, but it certainly looks like an outstanding upgrade to a building that can use some upgrading.
Is a petitioner here? Oh, there he is, okay.
While the petitioner's coming up...
Certainly.
I'll just take a moment to say that we need to suck up as much of Mr. Kritzman's opinions while we can, because I think he just said it was only five more meetings, that we have this wisdom to draw upon, so...
Four at this point.
I'm sure he'll be in the audience at some point, will he, Mr. Kritzman?
Yes, I'll meet you afterward.
I'm sure.
Good evening, members of...
Good evening, sir, your name and address.
Mark Abanatha with Alexander Bogarts, the architects for the project, 2445 Franklin Road, Bloomfield Hills.
And thank you for your patience.
No problem.
You are our last item, so thank you.
You're welcome. I don't have anything to add, we're excited about the project, I'm here on behalf of the developers who couldn't be here tonight.
Certainly.
I, I agree, I think it's a vast improvement, that's what we're looking for, a fresh, new look to the building, and we're just looking forward to moving forward with it.
Counsel, if you have any questions, yes, go right ahead.
I, I, anytime we get a project like this, I think one of the base questions we always have to ask ourselves is, are we okay with the masonry being painted? That, to me, is the biggest change going on here, and it's one of those things that once you do it, you have to keep doing it, because what will inevitably happen is, it will start peeling off of that brick facade. When this project went through the initial site plan approval process, when it was first constructed, it went through planning commission, it went through council, and they looked and said, yes, they're constructing a masonry building with a brick facade that we've fought for so many times before, this council has as well. It always gives me pause when we find ourselves in a situation with an existing brick building that we're going to go paint, which, you know, like, like I said, we, it can be done, and it can be done well, and I think, I think my only concerns about this is just not really having a full understanding of the materials and the colors, and, I mean, you're talking ephesus on the top, and I, I see it's got a little, you know, ornamentation at the top, do you intend to go with the teal color that's illustrated in the renderings?
Correct, the, the new main tenant that's going to occupy that corner space, and, and a lot of this was developed around that, there, in their signage, you can see there's some blue and that skin and vein, and so we've picked up that theme as an accent on that upper banding, and we've done a number of buildings from the standpoint of painting the brick, we're working with Masonry Institute standards for the type of paint that will be used, and obviously, like you said, it's going to have to be repainted, but we've done this because it, when you try and get a fresh, new, bright color or lighter color to the building, something that we're considering more state-of-the-art in terms of the architecture, that's where we felt going with the paint is the best way to go.
And I don't disagree with you, it's got a very old brown brick that has a very dated sort of look.
Correct.
The one, the one thing that bothers me about the elevations at this point, I mean, you're adding a banding across the top, it's certainly better than the T-111 that's up there now.
Right.
But nowhere in the documents are we able to see the east elevation of, I'm sorry, not the east, the south elevation, which perhaps you have it there?
Yes, that should be continued all the way around.
So, my, more importantly, my question was about that parapet section that you're raising up at the canopy.
Correct.
Will that, similar to the north elevation, will that be wrapped around the south elevation as well?
Yes, if you look at, I believe that's...
Because as you're driving, as you're driving up Middle Belt, you're going to see it from that side, but without it being depicted here, we learned this on some of the fast food tenants, and everyone's doing these little...
That's right.
These little kind of fake spaghetti western facades, that when you look at it from the wrong side, all you're seeing is the back roofing of it, it looks silly.
Yeah, I think the section depicts that, if I'm reading this section correctly, but yes, that's the intent, for it to be a complete raised element all the way around.
Thank you.
Is that an architectural term, that spaghetti kind of thing you just mentioned?
Spaghetti western, yeah.
Yes, okay.
You all know what I'm talking about.
Yes, sir, we do. Any other comments for this gentleman? Okay, counsel, it's your pleasure, it's your direction.
Madam Chair, I'll offer an approving resolution.
Okay, we have an approving resolution, were there any others? Anyone from the audience wishing to speak to this item?
Consent or regular?
I'm not sure yet.
On the regular, or, on consent.
I guess we are going consent. Okay, if that's it, then thank you, sir, for coming in, and much success to you.
Great, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Okay, counsel, we've got to go back to audience communication, anyone wishing to speak to the council on any item that wasn't on the yellow sheet tonight, which mine got a little mixed up, so, but, anyone else, please approach, put them to my right or left, if not, and I can see anyone...
Hang in, hang in, hang in, hang in.
Pardon me, sir, sorry. Don't run.
Rest of the Petersons, they're at Jill Jones's office.
Oh, okay, bye.
Just stopped in to say hello, we're still fighting with the budget, trying to get it done. I, I wanted to announce, though, that the governor is filling commission appointments, if you look at Lara, the licensing and regulatory authority, there are a number of different commission seats available, and I'd be happy to, we'd be happy to recommend anyone that was interested.
That's very kind of you, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else, questions?
Just all ahead?
Tell the representative hello.
Okay, sure.
Thank you for waiting tonight, sir, we really do appreciate it.
Oh, absolutely, it's all right.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Anyone else? No? Where are you? Our adjournment.